6:31 PM. Thank you. At 6:31 PM. I'll let Joe have a seat. Do we have any public comments? Eric.
So it didn't make it onto the agenda because I didn't hear back until today, but I finally did hear back from Katie and Dugan, who did review the rules and rubrics and everything for the business plan competition. They gave us a few minor changes. Those have been made. But because we didn't get it till today, we're just going to push it by one week and start it on Monday. We'll start seeing everything for that through this week and into next week.
Okay. Thank you. Jeanette.
I have something. Also, it didn't make it on the agenda, but just to update you on the Town Hall ramp project, the ad that we placed got no response. So between Travis and myself, we have reached out directly to some concrete, local concrete construction firms, and three of them have gotten back to us. And Travis plans to meet with them next week to look at, you know, look at the site. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have some quotes.
Thank you for the update. Dan.
I'd like to thank the town of Dover for sending up the police department, the fire, and the highway department, plus Eric Dobson, Dobbin, for his bringing the equipment up to where the silo is. It was a wonderful event. Unfortunately, it wasn't published very well as a result of the last minute from Janet Boyd, but it was a great little event for the people to come and see the equipment and get to enjoy the teddy bear people from the Nye House group. It was a wonderful little event.
Very nice. Anything else under public comments? I would like to add to the next agenda, an update from Travis about our assistance to New Fane, and we're obviously going to track our fees that our road crew was called out on Friday and use our trucks. And they're going to be obviously looking at FEMA funds, so I want to make sure that we stay on top of those additional hours that we put in on last Friday. And I, I'm glad that we helped our neighbors, but we should be reimbursed because that would all be at overtime as well. So we need to stay on top of that. Okay, unfinished business. We have an update from the Nikrasen Group, and they also have a proposal for us. And I see Adam is with us tonight. Welcome, Adam.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to share these with the board. And there's a couple extra copies here. And there's also a proposed agreement. So I want to share that with the board as well. Okay, Adam, you have the stage.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you. A way of introduction, my name is Adam Nikrasen. I head the Nikrasen Group, which in Montpelier is a government affairs firm. We're a many multi-client lobbying shop that helps various interests, many of them quasi-public and Mont-oriented, engaged state lawmakers to, in your case, drive for particular outcome, which I'm going to in about seven or eight minutes, update you on our work, which is going to basically be an update on what's going on in the Capitol on this issue that you care about, explain it along the way, and then just draw your attention to the proposal to have our work continue as this issue continues to heat up in the State House. So refreshing everyone's memory and bringing everyone together under our charge, which is to help the Dover community lead advocacy for state policy reform to correct the unfairness in the state's education funding formula that produces harmful results, less than deserved funding for rural communities, Dover. And the 2021 legislative session was a COVID-disrupted atmosphere, but candidly, this issue was on a very short list, very short list, of hot topics that broke through the, you know, COVID-only atmosphere, which was otherwise focused on spending a historic amount of federal dollars to get itself to further action as ahead. Now, let me just identify one clear, specific result that came from your advocacy and your work with colleague communities this past winter, championed by your local lawmakers. More on that in a moment. But there's this complicated thing in the education funding formula called the penalty box, which is, you know, an excess spending penalty. And it had distorted impact on a select number of communities. And while the legislature was unable to bring the full solution that you seek for permanent fix to the funding formula, they did hear the pitch that the harm to the taxpayer is unfair and freeze for several years, this penalty box. It's a win. It's a clear outcome, and your advocacy led for that. Now, onto the next stage, and, you know, we have a written report in, but you can see the championship of your community and your lawmakers. Representative Sibilia, top among them, Senator Ballant, Representative Kornheiser. Your county, your community has an unusual amount of horsepower engaged on this challenge, which is a big one for state lawmakers. And they're to be credited for this work. And in some ways, our job is to help them succeed advocating for your local interest. Now, the task force that wasn't acted by the legislature to try to move forward on implementing the fix is just underway, and the meetings have begun. They're in person in Montpelier. There was an organizational meeting and then a, the first real action meeting where they're just defining the problem again and hearing the reports on what's going on. The charge to this group of lawmakers, several from the Senate, some from the House, is to produce a path forward that the 2022 legislature can take. Now, we know, just to go to some brass tacks and then kind of review some of the work, the road ahead for this issue includes some that say, that's us, there needs to be a permanent fix to this unfairness. Education funding formula does not need new money, does not need new taxpayer dollars, needs to allocate it more fairly across the state. There's a counter, there's a counter view, others say. Let's not reopen all that. Let's just get some more money and put Band-Aids into it in the form of categorical aid. And so while that head-to-head conflict of permanent fix, fairness versus temporary Band-Aid, new money, is, is, is now coming more near in the windshield, to use the road ahead metaphor through this. Now, having said that, the task force has just begun their work, and they're digging in. Representative Kornheiser from your local area is a top official on it from the House delegation. And, you know, our, our job is to help keep this conversation focused. You're in coalition with other communities, and we're helping your community testify, present op-eds, stay on message in hearings across all of the pressure points on this topic. The, the heat on this is ahead. The, the table's now set for the challenge to, to come before lawmakers. So Vicki, I can answer questions, get into more detail, provide more resources. I wanted to spend time and wanted to kind of open it there.
Does anybody have any specific questions of Adam about concerning their lobbying efforts? We are the direct beneficiary this year by the fact that the penalty box was removed for all towns. I think that was a way to get it to go across this, you know, pass. So we are paying a lower tax rate, every one of us, on the homestead tax rate than we would have been paying because we were in the penalty box. And that's the first time Dover has been in the penalty box. And, I mean, Rich quoted us 40 cents saved at a meeting, so that's a lot of money on the tax rate, a huge amount. So I asked Adam to come speak because our, our contract with them has expired. I think it's important, nothing besides the penalty box being removed for two years is, has really been solidified. And so we, I think we need to continue our efforts. I think the money we spent was well-spent, and he's proposing another contract with us that would run from July 1st through June 30th. So this starting back in July through June 30th, 2022. And I think that at this point, in my opinion, we need to continue to push for the waiting, the weights to change. They're unfair, and anything short of that, I don't think is, is a real long-term win for the towns that are adversely affected by this. So anybody have any thoughts? Yeah. Scott.
So real quickly, Adam, if we, when we move forward with this next contract, what would you say a successful next session would look like realistically? You're like, all right, we're at June 2022, and you're coming back to report to us again, and you're like, this was really successful because?
The state education formula is now going to adjust the weights so that your community, without increased taxes to fund Band-Aids coming back to you, gets more dollars for your schools.
And the Band-Aid thing, the Band-Aid thing, I think, is really important to understand. That changes all the time. It may be a Band-Aid of a significant amount of money for two or three or four years, and then it's cut in half, and then it's cut in half again. It's, it's all at the whim of the legislature. And so that tends to be a very volatile way to fill in the cracks. It's better, I think, to build a new foundation is a better way to do it than to, to keep shoving Band-Aid money in the cracks. What do you think, Adam?
I think that this question is going to be unusually hot for the next year, as state lawmakers now have looked in the mirror, seen unfairness. Our job year one, Scott, was to hold the mirror up and not let this continue to be aside in the closet, to be very direct. Now, our job is to keep that mirror there and say, a fix, not a special new fund, is the way to go. You have local lawmaker, Representative Sibilia, is the unusually poignant champion in, in this area. So your community is really on point in the statewide, on the statewide stage in that regard.
Board, any questions?
No.
No.
So unfortunately, the agreement wasn't warned. I'm sorry. So we'd like to get that on the agenda for the next meeting. It's a year contract, and I think the total is $24,000. So divide that by 12 months, it's $2,000 a month. Adam's still working for us, continuing to stay on top of things, and so I don't think we've lost anything. But this does need to be a warranted article, and it was not worn that way. So we'll just pick it up in, in two weeks.
For my part, totally fine. We're in this for an 18-month fight. When we chartered this, we'd hope we'd come to this intersection with you. And, you know, for, for us, we're a pretty high horsepower firm, pretty wide portfolio, and on the magnitude of effort, we have passion for this, I would just want to say, because of the unfairness. And so, you know, we're looking to bring full force at a rate that recognizes you're a public institution in that regard, Vicki. So thank you, and I, we'll look to your cue on when to drop or answer questions.
Anything else?
Just that he would probably want to be at the next meeting.
Can you zoom in in two weeks, so there is a question? Same time, same place, two weeks from tonight?
Yes, unless the Quebec border lets Americans return, because I'll be canoe-trekking in La Verandre, Quebec, but it's looking unlikely, and if not me, a colleague for sure, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you. All right, moving on. We are tabling the update from library sign because we don't have all the details per Scott, correct?
Sure, yeah, I just don't have like an exact price. He gave me a ballpark, but, yeah, it was like a really big ballpark, like, you know, it could be like a 100 or like 500. So I sent him pictures, and he's, but he does think it's possible to, you know, obviously, and not being like a crazy price to put like a little rainbow thing over the top, and, and then if it makes sense with the snowpack, to put like a little banner below for Kids in the Country.
Okay, so we'll look forward to hopefully getting that on the agenda where we can make an action on this, what is an illegal sign right now. Okay, so moving on, we are going to consider setting the 2021 tax rate or holding a special meeting on August 6th. Marco.
We're good to go.
We're good to go?
Yeah. I sent, I sent you an email this afternoon.
I was so busy, I didn't see it. Is it, is it this right here?
That's it. We have a, we've lodged, they lodged the grand list today.
Wow, that's early.
And it's done.
Okay.
So.
So the grand list has?
It's a billion, oh, 22, nine, oh, five, five, six, nine. So it's up, up a touch.
Looks like it's up, yeah, several millions, 25 million?
25 million.
Mm-hmm.
So, so as we've reported earlier, the homestead education rate this year is up 10, 10 and a half cents. The non-homestead education rate is basically flat. The municipal rate is basically flat, so we're really fighting against the, the 10 cents on the homestead education rate. We do have a surplus this year, 700, 780,000. 200,000 of that is, on the highway side, 200,000 of that is from Taff Brook grant, Taff Brook grant proceeds. The, the work was done the prior year, the money was expended in the prior fiscal year, but the, the grant was received this fiscal year, at the end of June 30, 21. So, so 200,000 of the highway, and then we've had increased delinquent tax revenue, even clerk recording fees are up just because of the explosion of volume in the real estate market. So we've had more than anticipated revenue, and on the expense side, we've been flat to down in several categories, so fiscally in good shape.
So with the 780 total, what would be your recommendation, Marco?
I would recommend, yeah.
We have to be careful because it, we won't always have this kind of?
That's right.
And so it will be a, a large bump at some point, potentially.
Plus, you're, essentially, the, the surplus is kind of an unrealized number that you're shooting against actual money that you need to come in through the door. So next year, potentially, you might have a shortfall to the tune of what we buy the rate down this year. But I even reviewed it with Sullivan and Powers, and they were comfortable with 400,000, 500,000 being used to buy down the rate.
So if we plugged in 500,000?
So if we plug in 500,000, so basically, for every 100,000 is a penny on the tax rate.
So that would almost cut the increase in half.
In half, right. That's right. So you'd be looking at?
About five and a half cents?
About five and a half cents, right. Almost six cents on the homestead, correct?
Well, it would be a town tax rate that would be reduced. Now, homestead would stay as high as it is.
That's right.
It's just our town rate.
Yeah, right, just in.
And would we want to put 200 of that against the highway?
We could. We could do 200 of the highway, 300 in the, the general fund.
Comments? Scott's gone. You guys?
That's good. Need a motion?
Well, let's get the, let's get all the numbers here.
You're going to be rates, yeah.
Yes. Anybody else? Any comments from the public? Everybody's quiet. It's nice that we have a, a surplus in order, so that this 11-cent increase, that's a pretty substantial increase for the town of Dover, so even five and a half is going to be a lot. Yeah. Well, I'm excited we're able to do this tonight, Marco, actually.
You're excited?
I'm sure you're out of your mind excited. Okay, so if we?
I have work this weekend.
If we, tell us when you have the numbers.
All right, I'm ready. We can do, so 500 in total is what we're going to do of the surplus, and that would bring the total homestead rate to 2.1014. And the total non-homestead rate would be 1.9952. So the total would be this whole end. I'm sorry? That's the total rate? That's the total combined, everything in.
So I think our motion should say that we want to apply $500,000 of the 21, 22 fiscal year. It's a 21.
2021.
2021 fiscal year, 300 of which to the opera, to the operational, 200 of which to the highway, to bring these tax rates to this rate. Somebody want to make that motion?
As stated, I'd like to make the motion that we reduce the tax rate by $500,000, taking 200,000 from the highway department and 300,000 from the surplus to reduce the tax rate by five cents.
I think that motion needs to be amended to say, applying 200,000 of the?
The highway surplus.
To the highway surplus, yes.
I amend it, applying 200,000.
To create a homestead rate of 2.1014 and a non-homestead rate of 1.9952.
Right.
So amended.
Second.
Anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, he's yes.
I will print out the original and have the board sign it.
Just wondering what the municipal rate's going to be?
So the municipal rate will be?
All-in or separated highway from?
I can do both. Let's see. The operational general fund tax rate will be .2935. And the highway rate will be .1147. And then there's a bit of a veteran's exemption that's built in there. So the total municipal rate is .4083.
Which is, which is down.
Right. Four and a half cents.
Yep.
This is the education rate.
That's all-in.
The edu, correct. The education all-in homestead is 2.1014, and the non-homestead is 1.9952. Sorry.
Okay, great. So do you want us to come in and sign that?
I can go downstairs, print one out, and we can sign it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Sure. Can we print here? It'll take me two seconds upstairs. Okay.
We'll wait.
Sure. Back.
So we've already moved and approved that, so we can sign that when he returns. New business, the request from Phil Bowen for a benefit concert at Dover Park, October 10th, from 2 to 4 PM. Phil is not with us tonight. He did this concert last year. Does anybody want to speak to this? Jeanette.
Oh, maybe Eric does too, but Phil had come to me and asked to put on the agenda, just similar to what, as you said, he did this last year at the park. He just wants to make sure you're all okay with that. He's not sure who yet the beneficiary will be. It will be a benefit for someone, and, gee, now, I just lost my mind. I don't know, he just wanted your blessing to, to do that again.
Eric, did you have anything to say about it?
Just that I, I think this might even be the third year that he's done it, or, you know, or possibly more. It's, it's always a great event, and it's a good thing for us to do.
Yeah, I think this is the third one. I think the first one was at the Town Hall. So this is the second one at the park. So does anybody have any comments or concerns about the concert on October 10th, afternoon concert? If not, I think we should make a motion.
I move that we allow Phil Bowen's concert to take place, so I don't have to do it.
October 10th from 2 to 4 PM, and it's a benefit.
To, for the benefit of whomever he decides.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we have the Sullivan and Powers scope of agreement. They've already been in to do our, our, this is our light audit.
Full audit.
Oh, this was full?
Full audit, yeah.
For 15,000?
Yeah, it's usually 10.
Okay.
It got, that was returned to sender, so they just brought it back. They brought it with them when they came.
Okay, and they were here last week? Two weeks ago. So we can all sign this. Do we have an idea when they're going to get the findings of the audit?
Should be soon.
Okay. Yeah, this is dated June 10th, so we just got it, right?
Yeah.
So does somebody make, want to make a motion that we approve the Sullivan and Powers scope of services agreement for the audit?
I move that we agree to the agreement for the Sullivan and Powers audit, yeah, fee, for their services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along to the Board of Liquor Control. Does somebody want to make a motion to move into the Board of Liquor Control?
I make a motion that we move into the Board of Liquor Control.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
So the first thing we have is a catering permit for the Town Hall for August 14th from Jim's Bistro at the Roadhouse to cater an event. We do not sign this, Andy signs this, but he wants us to weigh in. Does anybody want to?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the catering permit August 14th at Town Hall for Jim's Bistro at the Roadhouse?
May I speak first?
Yes.
He approved the whole meeting for the murder at the Sugar House. It's been a tremendous help to us, anybody who wants to do an event at the Town Hall because he's the, one of the few people who has a catering license and makes it available for good purposes. So I agree that we should do it.
Ah, okay.
Make a motion? Am I making a motion for it?
Did you make a motion? Will you make a motion, somebody?
I make a motion that we allow Jim's Bistro Roadhouse to have a catering request for August 14th at the Town Hall.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Scott is not there right now, so Scott is abstaining. Okay, so.
Yep, Sullivan.
He's in the can.
We're, we're, okay. This must be why Tracy is with us. She's got a, there's a special event permit for September 25th at Mount Snow Eden Ice Cider Company Wine and Harvest Festival. I thought these? I thought these all came under one, I'm confused. Eric, can you talk to me about that?
I'm actually, as soon as I saw this on the agenda, I meant to reach out to the organizers because these are not supposed to be coming in one at a time. The amount of permits that are required for that festival, they're usually all sent, all the information is sent in under one applicant who's usually North Branch Vineyards. So I will reach out to the chamber and whoever is coordinating the event to just kind of straighten that out.
And Jeanette is waving her hand.
Yes. Yes, I said the same thing when they, then they presented this and I reached out to North, North Branch Vineyards and he had not even heard that the event was happening. So I guess, I don't know, this was the chamber, I'm not really sure, but Eden Ice Cider Company had received the application from the chamber. So that's why she sent this in and I know two years ago or at other times, it's been a blanket permit with four vendors listed that North Branch Vineyards had submitted. So I did reach out to him. He, again, he hadn't heard of it. He was going to reach out to the chamber, so. I don't know, but I figure we should at least, at least approve their permit. If the others fall by wayside, I don't know.
Tracy?
To be clear, this is not a Mount Snow event. It's just hosted at Mount Snow. It's a chamber event, so it's the chamber organizing it and hosting it. So I was just wanting to listen into the meeting because I hadn't been here in a while, so.
Well, thanks for coming. So we can approve this, but it would be nice not to have every vendor come to us if the chamber can figure out how to do that. So Eric, can Eric, Eric will reach out to the chamber. We'll approve this tentatively and see where this, you know, see if they can bundle them together. That make sense? Okay. So I need somebody to make a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the special permit from September 25th at Mount Snow and Eden Ice Cider Company Wine and Harvest Festival.
Tentatively? Based on whether the chamber comes in with a, a blanket.
Perfect.
Liquor special event permit.
I second it.
Any, any discussion about that? And Eric, you will reach out to the chamber. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think.
I think. Okay. Can I have a motion to come out of the Board of Liquor Control?
I make a motion that we come out of Board of Liquor Control?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're into the FYIs. We have the summer concerts in the park, what?
Consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, consent agenda, sorry. We need to approve the minutes of July 20th? Yeah. So Scott, you want to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th?
As I move that, we approve the minutes of July 20th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Joe's abstaining. And then we have the warrants of July 24th for 288,504 and 4 cents. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Is that for this one we have right here, correct?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants of July 24th, 2021 in the amount of 288,504 and 4 cents.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we'll move on. We have summer concerts, Waltham Brothers this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00, Social Medication, a Wednesday night concert from 6:00 to 8:00 next Wednesday, and the Jacksonville Blues Band, August 15th from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Eric, what happened to the band this weekend?
From my understanding, as of Sunday morning, there was severe weather in the forecast throughout the day. And that weather shifted throughout the day so that it would have been possible probably to have the concert, but I think at the time that the decision was made, it looked like it was impossible to have it.
Okay. Thank you. We also have under FYI, the planning commission meets August 9th at 6:00. Trails and Rec Committee is next Tuesday, the 10th at 6:30. And then we have a thank you letter from Grace Cottage thanking us for a generous donation of $3,000 as approved in town meeting. We cherish every gift and each donation helps us maintain the highest level of personal and professional care for our patients, many of whom come from east and west over. So, thank you very much. Thank you. So I, that just brought up a question in my mind. I noticed that we did a lot of appropriations in July before we had any tax money. If we didn't have money, we wouldn't be doing those that early in the fiscal year. Right? I, 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 yes, okay. Thank you. I just.
Housekeeping to get them out of the way.
As long as we had the money?
Right.
Right.
The library being the biggest one.
Yeah. And I saw Rescue was in there and, yeah. And Eric, do we have any liaison reports? No. And do we need an executive session? I'm not aware of one. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:09, 7 o'clock? 7:09.
I second it.
How about that?
You're adjourned. Thank you.